...the very high-level pieces, but one thing I just want to make clear about this project, we've worked with airports of kind of all sizes all across Canada and of course in B.C. as well, and we've kind of seen what works and what doesn't work. And you know, what doesn't really work is when you try and come up with a plan that focuses too much on the vision, it's too long-term. It seems great, but then it's really what is the next step? How do you actually implement that? So you'll see in our report that we really tried to strike a balance between talking about the vision, because for planning it has to be a long-term thing, you have to know what you're going to get to. So we talk about long-term initiatives, but we've also identified some short-term or even immediate opportunities that can be very easily implemented that are kind of the next steps along the path to getting to a vision that we think will work for the community. So you know, with that being said, we'll get into the presentation here, touch on some of the high points, and then we'll hand it over for questions.
Thank you.
Okay, so next slide, next slide. Our pictures, you know us, next slide please. Yeah, yeah, keep going. Okay, so here, you know, again, in the report, we've talked about the benefits of aviation, but one thing we just want to be clear on is that in every community we've worked in, the community has received some benefit from the airport. I think that, you know, all communities out there will agree that it's a big economic driver, it's a center of activity within that community. There's been numerous studies that have done to kind of quantify what the economic impact is, and we have some information on that in the report, but the other piece that I want to be clear about too is the benefit of general aviation. I think this is often a misconception within communities that general aviation, it's just like a, you know, hobby for some people, and they go off and fly their planes as a private pilot, but it really is the building block for an airport. It's analogous to small businesses in a town, right? If you're talking about economic development, yeah, the big ones maybe you want to focus on are the big developments, the big employers, that's great to bring them in, but without all the small businesses, you can't actually support, you know, that economy, and that's the same thing with general aviation. They're the ones that, yeah, it's a hobby, they'll come in, they've, you know, maybe they'll buy a property here, maybe they won't, maybe they'll just pass through, but having them there, it creates a stable base of activity which allows for other businesses to flourish. For example, fuel supply. So fuel is needed for firefighting and that kind of stuff, but no one is, no private business is going to build a fuel supply facility there, just waiting until there's a wildfire and the forestry service is going to show up to buy, you know, some fuel from them one day of the year. They need that general aviation, that steady base to come and buy fuel that keeps the business sustainable. So general aviation really is the cornerstone of any successful airport, really throughout the world, when we're talking about small airports. The YVRs, they don't need general aviation, in fact, they kicked all the general aviation out, but they're big, you know, they can sustain themselves with British Airways of the world. In a town like a Soyuz, general aviation would be the cornerstone. Next slide please. So I'll hand it over to Noel here.
Thanks, Alex, and good morning, everyone. Next slide please. It's just a current overview of where the airport's currently at. So in 2005, work began on a number of initiatives that to date have totaled about $650,000. So it's a significant amount of money, and we do lay out action items later in the report that sort of work towards earnings of a return on the investment to date. Currently, no scheduled flights, there's no lighting, no nav aids, no tie-downs or fueling services at the airport. It's partially enclosed with fencing, and upon our first site visit, we took a walk down the runway, and it is indeed in very good condition, although the runway markings are currently faded, they were last painted about a decade ago. And in the report, as you'll see, we do have three long-term scenarios for runway intentions. Perfect. Thank you. So the community consultation process, as you might recall, we came in early May and led some roundtable discussions with a number of key stakeholder and rights holder groups. The list is included in detail in the report, but the themes of the groups here are outlined, so of course we had a discussion with the council and senior staff, the OIB, the ecde groups and tourism groups. We had a chat with the general businesses, public services, and of course, airport users and nearby tenants. One piece that I do want to iterate is the feedback from these group sessions really does serve as a major input into the strategic plan. This isn't introvert's strategic plan, it is a Soyuz community strategic plan. Next slide please. Perfect. A couple of themes from the community feedback include the following, but it's not just limited to these few points here. The airport does allow for social connectivity to the community, so it could provide potential business travelers direct access from locations such as Vancouver, Victoria, to name a few, and an opportunity for some communities whose families work maybe in remote locations for them to fly in and fly out, those families that are stationed here in Soyuz but may work elsewhere. The airport does provide key essential services such as border patrol, search and rescue, firefighting. We spoke to the RCMP early in May who iterated the importance that they felt the airport had for them. The airport does generate non-aviation revenues with the One Country Racing Association holding a number of events every year with an estimated attendance just over 4,000 every year, so that brings in some revenue there. And last but not least, the airport does provide an opportunity to spark interest in the aviation industry amongst youth, gives them an exposure that they might not otherwise have in jobs such as piloting or maintenance, high-paying lucrative jobs indeed. Next slide please. Thank you. So opportunities for airport growth, again, this is sort of based on a lot of discussions we had with the broader community, a lot of accommodations. There is an opportunity to serve higher-end clientele that are willing to fly in directly to get to their accommodation, their activities more efficiently. The growth of the aviation industry and high-paying jobs for the community, we sort of touched on that a little bit with the exposure of the aviation industry to the younger demographic. One key point here is the opportunity to boost tourism during peak season and off-season. This would give businesses the opportunity to hire permanent positions, year-round positions, as opposed to perhaps seasonal positions that can only be filled during the peak summer months. We heard that from the accommodations. And lastly, just a point down there, potential for some aircraft currently stationed at Pencton to be moved to the Soyuz base, and this was in discussion with Area 27 noted that there were some clients who had stationed aircraft in Pencton. So of course, this would be dependent on consecutive actions taken at the airport and indeed having hangars and fuel provided, so we've added that. Next slide. Some items for consideration, again, this was based on community feedback. First point being, some of the growth of the airport, indeed to the north, there are some considerations for agricultural land reserve, some concerns about ineffective land use and mindfulness of some of the environmental issues that come with that. So we've associated some industry best practices to tackle that piece, and again, we suggest mitigating through proper land use planning. Another item for consideration is, of course, the effect of noise. GA aircraft, they do make noise, and some people are bothered by it, but again, these can be mitigated and managed by implementing proper flight paths that might circumnavigate certain populous areas, so. Third point, resident concerns about paying higher taxes. Again, this would be managed by focusing on funding through grants. For example, the BCR Access Program would be a good example of that. And last point, prioritizing safety is a key requirement. You're going to find this in most, if not all, strategic plans for airports of any size. Safety is absolutely the number-one priority. Nobody's going to want to fly to an airport if it isn't safe, so.
Yes, so based on that feedback from those consultations, we've developed some goals here, six goals specifically. So the first one, I think that this will really, it has to do with governance, and that's really to do with decision-making and how decisions are made and what the process is for doing that. And of course, you know, that is a fundamental piece for any plan, right? There has to be a clear mechanism for making decisions, and that's why we put it as kind of the number-one goal, and we'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. You know, to Noel's point, of course, safety has to be up there as number-one, you can never lose sight of that with an airport, because you know, it is critical that it's a safe operation, but it also, safety does feed into the other goals. In terms of developing an airport, there's many things that general aviation pilots will require or, you know, private business operators will require, because of course, safety is a key piece of their business. So getting things done on the safety side will actually help develop other pieces of the airport. The third goal is to provide a facility that supports general aviation, and then again, that again goes to my point about that being kind of the fundamental building block for any activity at an airport. Next slide please. And then kind of looking a little bit further down the road, looking at developing a facility that can enable or accommodate air services to support tourism and social connectivity. So those are fairly broad, but generally what that can mean is like small aircraft charters. So the ability for a group out of, say, Vancouver or Calgary to come in, to come in and do a corporate retreat in a Soyuz, they can hire an aircraft in Calgary or Vancouver and come in. But the other element of that is the social connectivity. This is something that we also heard from stakeholders, and particularly the Soyuz Indian Band gave the example of they have to do a lot of business in Vancouver or Calgary, and they often struggle to get there because they have to fly on, you know, scheduled aircraft out of Pencton, and it's often hard to get large group bookings. So if they could just hire an aircraft from Vancouver, that actually may be a cost-effective mechanism for them to do that, so they expressed a lot of interest in that. So that's the social connectivity element. It's a, it's, you can think about it as a bridge, right? The airport is a bridge to the rest of the world, just like, you know, Highway 3 is or any other highway in and out of the community. And then, you know, as a result of this increased activity, you can create an environment that promotes the development of aviation career, so that's the broader spin-off into the community and allow, you know, creates those jobs that provide for a sustainable community where families can actually live year-round and, you know, contribute to the economy. And then, of course, you know, the funding is an important piece of that, so that's why we identify a goal as coming up with a business plan that enables the airport to be financially sustainable. So you're thinking about all these other goals, but then you're also thinking about, you know, ways of developing revenue streams, ways of accessing grants to help implement those goals. Slide? So taking those goals, then we talked, we looked at specific initiatives that we could target for implementing those goals. And at this stage of the process, we kind of thought it would make sense to break them up into three pieces, three broad categories. So one is planning, so of course, that's a lot of the, you know, consultations or report writing or research or that kind of stuff. There's the infrastructure, that's obviously very tangible examples, like painting the runway, right? That's, you can easily see, you know, what that is. And then, of course, there's the funding element. So with, you know, those three categories, we came up with a number of items, I think 23 specifically, and then we rolled those 23 items into what we were calling a prioritized action items list. Next slide. And that, you have the full details in the report, you can see all of them, I think there's 21 in the report, but right here for this presentation, I've identified six that I think are, you know, fairly straightforward, that can be implemented almost immediately. So certainly, I think those are the key ones for consideration, and that goes to my point again about, you know, having a successful plan. You can think about the vision, and I've seen many, you know, sessions where people are, oh, yeah, that's a great vision, we all want to work towards that, and then they go off, and it never really goes anywhere, because no one knows what to do next. And so that's why we tried to, you know, come up with some of these recommendations, some of these action items that they can easily be implemented to get the progress moving towards those goals. Next slide. And the governance, one thing I'll just touch on again is, you know, we dedicated a small chapter to that in the report, because we do feel that's an important element for any airport, well, in fact, for any entity to be run, right? Obviously, governance, you have to have good governance, and that's really key, just to allow the decisions to be made, right? It's an effective mechanism for making decisions and kind of moving along and implementing that. So we've put forward two structures that we think could work. One would be a society, and we understand that the desert park is run something similar to that, it's a society, so some type of structure like that. I don't know all the details about Desert Park, but something like that potentially could be suitable. And then, of course, there's another option where it's a skills-based advisory board, where it's, it's a board that you create to provide informed input, but the ultimate approval would still be made by council. So it's those two that we've put forward, and, you know, that really concludes our presentation, but what I'll just mention before we hand it over to question and answer is that, in our view, the kind of the next steps, one would be, think about this governance. Think about the two options, think about what works for you guys, and then as the next steps, we would encourage you to have a meeting with the Airport Development Society and see if you can get the ball rolling on one of these structures, just to give a little more clarity around how the decisions will be made moving forward. And then the other piece would be to consider those immediate action items, things like painting the runway and getting a grant funding for that, it may not cost the town anything to do it, so it certainly would make a lot of sense to go out and get that funding and get some of these things moving forward. So thank you very much, that's the presentation, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for a very clear presentation, and it looks to me like you've covered a lot of the things that perhaps we had questions about, but I will ask Counselor King, he had a question first, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if you have the answer, but maybe Glenn does. Are you registered federally yet? That would open the door to so much more funding.
Not, not, we're not registered federally, we're just a provincial society.
I understand.
But a lot of the federal funds only go for airports that have scheduled flights, and we don't have that. You have to have a minimum of 1,000 passengers a year, so we don't qualify for that.
Yeah, but I'm not saying that particular one fund, it opens the door to a lot of other funding if you're federally registered. I just want to bring that point to your, you should be looking at doing that.
Okay, yes, thank you, yeah, good point.
Thank you, Councilor Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam McCordough. I wonder if you could comment on the northern extension of that runway, I think I got my directions right, the long extension that would go into, I believe, vineyards and that type of thing, privately owned land, I believe. And just, you know, I've always been a believer that in municipalities, you can solve most problems if you have two factors, time and money. And I see that, that kind of dream area up there as being so prohibitive in so many ways that I'm wondering if the energy that we put into considering that may be considered to be a little bit of a, you know, a dream thing for the way off in the future. When we looked at it before, and I stand corrected, I think just the property purchases alone is well into the millions of dollars, I, you know, if I'm wrong, I don't think I'm too far out. And then you have the, you know, the agricultural component of it and taking away agricultural land and all those dynamics and everything, I don't know how you would ever get over those obstacles, you know, unless, you know, some benefactor came along and dumped millions of dollars into the town coffers, then we could move ahead with it really well, but is it wasted energy? I guess that's my question at the end of the day for that particular part of your report.
Yeah, well, in terms of wasted energy, we didn't spend a whole bunch of time on it, it was pretty clear that if the runway needed to be extended, there's a small southern piece that you can get, but it has to go north. That became immediately apparent, and it's not because we're so smart, it's just because we saw the highway is there, so we're not proposing that it's going to be built across the highway. So the north is the only piece, but I certainly agree that it is complex. Land is not cheap, even if it's agricultural land, so that certainly has to be considered. And the whole ALR thing is, that's a big unknown, you know. Historically, it's been very difficult to get land out of there, who knows what will happen in the future? Maybe they'll say, we can get land out of the ALR and open up this land for ALR purposes, or it can be some type of hybrid type use, that we talked about this before, that there are airports out there that have agricultural use on the land. Really, you only need, it's the runway where the aircraft land, all the fields and stuff around there, it's just kind of space that you need to create a secure area, but you can grow crops there, and many airports do, but of course, it is a complex issue to acquire that land. The good thing about having ALR though is that it's not houses. If it was houses or office buildings, that is a proposition that it will never work, because it's just so expensive to go and go to individual homeowners and buy their houses out, the number of houses that you'd actually have to buy. So I'm not aware of any airport doing that in a meaningful way, but certainly, there are a number of airports in B.C. that are acquiring land for different purposes, either extending the runway or parking is a big issue at many smaller airports. And I'll give you an example, Comox, I don't know if any of you went there, maybe 20 years ago, but their airport was literally a modular facility, it was a trailer, and now they have a new terminal, they have almost 400,000 passengers, they have WestJet, they have Air Canada, so they needed to acquire land, so they bought adjacent properties that were either recreational properties, there was nothing really developed there, but they did have to pay, yeah, something in the low millions to get that, but they can offset that with the revenue stream, parking lots can be quite lucrative, and so it's just balancing that, you know. If the runway was extended, you know, what comes with that? What are the other pieces, and how do we achieve those other goals? And how do we balance the revenue stream? So if it was to extend the runway to allow for a certain type of activity that's going to bring a revenue stream to the town, then maybe that would make sense. But it is complex, and it is something that's further down, down the road.
Just to catch you up on where we were with discussions on that point, that is the Jerry Hesketh property, and in earlier presentations, we had met Jerry, and there is some interest in dealing with the community and the airport society to sell that property. It's 25 acres, seven's required for the airstrip, and that seven acres kind of goes through almost the middle to the third, it kind of goes on an angle, and it would bisect the 25 acres with 14 acres being available to the west, and then another seven or, sorry, another four to five acres to the east. And the vision was that potentially, we'd take the whole chunk, if the community was involved, we'd obviously have to work on ALR swaps, but airport was one of the ALR kind of exemptions, not exemption, that's the wrong word, but it was one of the areas where the ALR would concern, would review some leniency for land swaps if it was going to benefit the community for its own development purposes. So thought was 14 acres to the west would be developed into industrial, sell those industrial lots, which would help fund the acquisition of the land and the development of the land, and then perhaps the four or five acres to the east would be hangar homes, because they'd have spectacular views of the lake. So we did some calculations and penciled it out as a viable acquisition with the right, you know, zoning and ALR consideration. So clearly, a longer-term goal, but not an impossible one to achieve if, you know, the right, as I say, right zoning and right deals with ALR can be put forward, as well as with Jerry Hesketh. But I think we need to get to a point where we're kind of committed to what we've got, look at the easy wins that we can make with perhaps the shorter extension to the south, and then look at the longer-term goals of the northern expansion.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Madam McCordough. For Glenn, so when we're doing progressive projects like this, obviously, there's a perception from the community on moving forward with projects like this, and it's often steeped with misinformation or lack of information. Assuming that the, you know, the majority of the residents here aren't going to read through an extensive report, looking at the response to any media that's talked about this potential project or the development of this airport moving forward has elicited some responses from the community. So this being ungrainicous and available for people to see, I wanted to give you the opportunity to respond to what I see as the perception from the community, that if there's residents that feel there'd be significant funding on a major project that benefit few. And the argument behind that is, you obviously have the perception of the elite being able to use an airport and the taxpayers paying for it, the proximity to the Oliver Airport, and the 45-minute commute for bigger travel to the Pencton Airport, proximity to a Soyuz is similar to the distance to an airport from any major center. So the concern would be, you know, outside of grants, potential funding for ongoing operating costs, et cetera, how does the community as a whole benefit from this?
I think, you know, your, thanks for the opportunity, and I think your comment that potentially the airport would just benefit a few of the elite, I think that's incorrect. I think our vision always has been, and the reason that I got involved in airport development and air access, is really to extend our shoulder seasons. I think you're all aware that I'm involved in a resort in a community that does extremely well in the summertime and does pretty good in kind of the easy shoulder season, the May-Junes and the September-Octobers, but we really struggle in the winter and in, you know, in the February-Marches and in October-Novembers. And a point that Alex made was that if there was more business for the community, whether that be business retreats, corporate retreats that are staying in our convention hotels, that you'd have more full-time staff positions, and therefore, you'd have more people earning more money to spend more money, and perhaps the full-time jobs would attract families that would ultimately go to your schools and keep the schools, you know, viable. So I don't see the airport as being just for elite, I see it as really air access helping develop this community into a four-season community rather than a two-season community, and that's the key driver for me. It's really driving business in non-peak seasons. The rubber tire traffic just doesn't want to choose to come from Vancouver or Calgary, and even if they fly to Kelowna or Pencton, shuttling the 45 minutes is actually quite a barrier. We lose a lot of business that just won't come down this way because of that barrier, and we felt that if we could provide charter access, even if they're planes that hold, you know, 10, eight to 10 people, you're going to be getting some convention business, and that's going to keep your community more viable. And then there's, as I say, the spin-off jobs that go from that. So that would be my key point, is that we want to make this town more of a four-season town. I mean, certainly, the folks at Mount Baldy that have got a beautiful ski hill up there, the bones of that mountain are terrific, but they don't have enough user base to really develop it to the way it could potentially be, and I think air access would be another key point for that resort community up on the mountain to do better.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you very much to all of you for your presentation. We see that you sort of have some plans to move forward on this, so thank you for presenting what you have, and we look forward to seeing what you have next on the list. So thank you all.
Well, thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have, we're going to invite M.L.A. Larson to come up and talk about UBCM, I think. Welcome, Linda.
I hope you're going to talk about UBCM, and you're going to actually tell me what your most important issues are that you're going to bring forward to the UBCM, just so that I have a heads-up, and I know that once your meetings are set, you normally send me a list of what and where, but just what your most critical issues would be and which ministers you would be trying to get meetings with, even the top three or whatever that you're.
I'm going to let Mr. Romanko tell you, because I think there are five meetings that we've requested, but I think it had to be in by the 13th, so my assumption is it's been sent off.
Yes, I did my homework.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, time has marched on, yes.
So could you give M.L.A. Larson the list? There's five of them, I think.
Okay, so, and I'm not sure totally of the priority, but I think this is what it was. One was with the Public Safety Solicitor General, and...
Your policing issue, I would assume.
And there was, in terms of seeking assistance for post-flood damage, specific, or post-flood help, we had a number of senior citizens who had sandbags on their property after the floods, and they had nobody to help them to clean up. So although it was nice to have the forestry crews here and lay out the sandbags, there was nobody to clean up, so if there was some type of a program like that. The second part of that was looking at some type of grant program to assist communities with purchasing flood-related equipment, flood-prevention-related equipment, whether it be our own sandbaggers, so that we don't have to wait in a priority listing, and things like gavions or tiger dams, that we, once we identify priority areas, our crew could be trained to set them up, and we would not have to, you know, we were very fortunate to have forestry here, but if there were fires, there would have been a problem.
Yeah.
So that was number one. Number two was our Ministry of Transport seeking continued support for the storm water management programs, that we've been working with them very diligently. The, we've got another set of plans to continue... to, uh, continue with that, so, uh, we were going to bring the minister in on that. The second one was exploring, uh, uh, Main Street Development Policy. Uh, we we are going to be doing downtown renewal. We want to be, uh, thinking out of the box in terms of using all the space and we wanted to ensure that, uh, some, uh, highway policies would not be, uh, you know, uh, in our in our road for that. And, uh, the third issue was just to give, uh, the minister an update on the success of our, uh, third-party signage enforcement on highway access through town, where most of the sign, they've given us permission to to address that, so there was success with that. Uh, third was, uh, a meeting with the Tourism Arts and Culture Minister, uh, to provide an update on the successes that we've had with the RMI program and, uh, a future link or a future look at, uh, what we have planned. Uh, and the fourth was the Minister of Education, continued, uh, pressure on the rural, uh, rural education funding, uh, to ensure that it was there. Just going back to Solicitor General, we did want to, one of the points also was, uh, to continue with the pressure, uh, on the RCMP 5,000 population, uh, looking to the province, although it was an understanding that that's a federal type of contracting number, uh, that the province should take a look at, a staged, uh, program for communities, uh, to enable them to be successful. And, uh, and and the fourth was a meeting with, or fifth, sorry, was a meeting with municipal fair staff, uh, in relation to funding for housing programs, more of a general information on what's out there and, uh, so that council could get a better understanding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, I mean, I was certainly aware of most of these things. I I want to congratulate you too on the, um, getting the housing for workers that you did in partnership with business in this community. I I think that's a first, uh, and certainly one that, uh, is a good model for other communities that are having issues finding, uh, low-cost accommodation for people in tourism and and in those industries. So good on you for, um, sticking with that and pushing it through and finally getting it, you know, helping, or not getting in the way, I guess, of of it happening and actually, uh, helping them out, um, as well. I think you did some servicing to to the property, the sewer and water.
We did, and they came up with the idea first and came and presented to us. So then, Mr. Remanko had a look at legally what we could do and, uh, with Mr. Dinwoodie, we had a look at what we could do and how we could help it because we felt exactly the same way that it was worth pursuing if there was some way we could work together and make this happen. I'm not sure that they've actually, they wanted to have it open last month, but I I think they're still working out the details. Am I correct? I don't know whether they're actually in.
All all our parts are done.
Yes.
Uh, they're just waiting, I think, for Fordis, uh, servicing.
Power.
And, uh, and there was one, uh, yeah, I think that was, that was basically it.
So at least if it takes a little while this year, it'll be
Ready.
ready for next year with all of these parts done, yeah.
No, that's that's very good. And like you say, once it's set up and running, I think it's a really good model and that, um, it would be a good one to share with everybody.
In other years, we have looked at, uh, meeting with the Minister of Health. I I kind of feel that we're on a good track right now, um, with, uh, Interior Health has, um, has been listening, not always doing exactly as everybody wants. However, I think we have a good relationship with them and certainly with the, um, with Erin Fregon and the, you know, the, um, what is it that she's the head of? I always forget. She seems to be involved with everything. And, um, and so we, I think that we're really going ahead with that. Plus, we have, um, a a group that had that we had had asked to come up with the Rural Dividend Grant to look at the, uh, at the healthcare, all of the issues in Asouias and, um, we...
Just like a study, Sue, then? Is that the idea?
Yep.
An assessment or a...
Yep, yep. And we have had some feedback and we haven't met with them. I assume they're coming up sometime this month.
Okay. And you've you've had a really good committee all along that has met with Interior Health between Oliver and Asouias and
Yep.
and, um, you've been doing that regularly, which is, I think, has really helped because you're in their face, which is where you need to be.
And the fact that the that the, um, the hospital, South Okanagan in general, is getting a big upgrade, um, and the plans will be out very soon and that will be started. So these are all positive steps to working, and we have a new doctor that's coming to Asouias starting next month. And, um, you know, things are, I think, slowly improving in that area. So it's not, um, doom and gloom like it was a year or so ago.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Thank you.
So did you see anything else that you thought we should be talking about or, um, or does that, and we'll certainly send you the list once we have it, but we haven't received, we may not for a while, eh?
No, the, uh, we we just make the requests now and then once they're approved, we have to provide more background information.
Yeah, and they probably won't get that until about the end of August, I would think, before, okay. So, yeah, once you've got them, no, I I think you've covered everything. You certainly, as a council, have been on top of the issues that have happened. Um, I'm I'm just about the, um, sandbag thing, all right? Um, the whole area was under the state of emergency. Um, and I'm not aware, because I've spent a lot of time in Grand Fork lately, um, of what the other community, what was happening in other communities with the sandbags. So when you're at the Regional District Board, have you, has this discussion come up at all? Because of course it was under their umbrella.
Well, I believe that, uh, Mr. Dinwoodie had talked to, um, uh, you you arranged for somebody to come and help with sandbags in certain areas with with retired people that needed help, did you not? I know there were few people that phoned me and you said that you had, I think it was the firefighting crew that were able to stay a little bit longer and did help with cleaning that up?
Yeah, occasionally, uh, the forestry crews were able to, like I said, help people who were elderly or didn't have any friends to help them with their stuff, crews. But after, after the flooding was over, um, it was really difficult to get the province to come pick up the leftover sandbags. Uh, for example, last week, we had, I had to send crews down to the Inkinney Point area to pick up the sandbags that were on our infrastructure out there because nobody, like, forestry did a great job of protecting the infrastructure, but then they left. And and they and they left behind all the sandbags and it just took us a while to get there and pick it all up. But we actually had to go pick them up ourselves last week.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So we have a very good coordinator, Paul, at our Regional District, and he really, I think, has looked very carefully at all of the issues and and actually did a video, a five-minute video of all of the areas. Of course, some were hit worse than others, but he sent it to EMBC, Emergency Management, and they were extremely impressed with it. So, um, I'm not sure that it's available for everybody, but it certainly, uh, the Regional District has it and he, I think, has a pretty good handle on what worked this year, what things could be, and I know the Regional District has has arranged meetings as well to go and
Follow up.
and talk about those issues. So I think it'll come up from many different communities.
Different sources, yeah. I I would, I have meetings with EMBC and I think that all of these things need to go in there. And then I'm sure that they'll try and sort this out. So next time it, or...
Well, it helps a little bit. And we don't want to think of it as the next time, but...
We don't want to think about next time, but nonetheless...
Two years in a row.
Yeah. And I know there hasn't been the wrap-up meetings yet that are normally happen after an event, which will probably happen not till the end of August, hopefully, because they're still in the event in lots of areas. So, um, hopefully during that wrap-up meeting, there'll be a report that goes into EMBC.
So Jeanette Van Veenen from our staff is, has been very involved with that, and she will continue to attend those meetings, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, okay. No, that's, uh, I, like I say, uh, the other one was the tourism and the the RMI, but there was that big kind of flurry of activity when the minister said it could be used for things other than what you normally were using that money for. I and I never heard after the initial flurry what happened with that or how that panned out. So Barry, what was the end result of that?
Actually, a notice came out, uh, last, end of last week, or there was a, a email came out, uh, that, and that was the the Municipal Rural, uh, Grant, uh, not Grant Tax, uh, MRDT. Uh, they, uh, they've made a decision that the, uh, uh, the the funds that are kind of the stable funds, what's here now, that'll be continued to be used for what is.
Right.
The monies that are being, uh, projected to be gathered through, uh, taxes gained through, uh, companies like Airbnb, uh, the the online, uh, accommodator type of registration, those funds, uh, can be used for, uh, in for housing.
So that's new tax revenue, basically?
New tax, yeah, the new tax revenue can be targeted towards, uh, the the staff housing.
Okay.
So, uh, again, uh, talking to Destination Asouias last year, uh, sorry, last week, uh, they they felt that funds, uh, unless the province can develop some type of system with all the online, uh, companies, it's not just Airbnb because the people will move off Airbnb onto somebody else.
Yeah.
So, uh, there's a lot of work to do, but at least they've come out with a policy direction on on where the funds can be used.
So what you have currently is being
That's right.
Not being undermined in any way, shape, or form, which is what I was most concerned about.
Just to be clear, is, was there any indication that the RMI will become a line item, uh, as opposed to discretionary spending, which is, I think, where it sits now?
Uh, my understanding is that they're still working on that. Uh, the, uh, the the funds were, uh, brought out again, but again, they're still on a year by, they're, they've given us a look that said, you know, it's three years, but it's still a year-by-year type of of approval process.
Well, that's where I think I find challenge in the housing component of it, when it would take several, several years to to do anything significant with any of those funds coming in and with it still being discretionary.
So in your in your tourism discussion, I think that's fair to, as you do every year, to say that you need more certainty with that funding, that it needs to be longer than one year at a time, that it should be a three to five year in order for you to move ahead on any of these kind of projects. Okay? All right. Yeah, other than that, uh...
Okay. Well, thank you very much for for coming. We'll certainly let you know as soon as we have any concrete plans.
And I'll see you again before then, I'm sure. Okay.
Thank you.
I did put you down as attending all the meetings, so...
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the, uh, Mr. Dinwoodie on the Recycle BC.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Cordoff. Um, so Recycle BC is a nonprofit organization responsible for residential packaging and paper product recycling throughout British Columbia. Uh, the Town of Asouias has participated in Recycle BC program since its inception, offering residents both curbside and depot service. Uh, the Town of Asouias receives $73,806 last year in subsidies for market participation in Recycle BC, which used to be called MMBC. They changed their name recently. So, um, at a webinar presented to its members on June 27th, 2018, Recycle BC outlined several changes to their service which they are imposing, which they are proposing to implement in 2019. Several of these changes are new rates for curbside collection, education, and service administration, which are illustrated below. So our current rate for curbside collection is $31.95 per household. It's going to go up to $34.50 per household. Uh, the education, uh, rate is 75 cents per household. It'll remain the same. The depot rate is 25 cents per household. Uh, it'll actually go up to 75 cents per household. The system, uh, service administration rate is $2.50 per household and it'll go up down to $1.75 per household. And currently, the Town of Asouias is considered to have 1,933 households. Uh, the proposed change to Recycle BC program, which will have the greatest effect on Asouias residents, is their plan to no longer allow the use of recycle blue bags for curbside collection. Recycle BC is proposing to eliminate the use of blue bags for curbside collection by the year 2020. All curbside collection will be required to be placed in containers, although the recycling is allowed to be co-mingled into one container. Unfortunately, the Town of Asouias has just entered into a new five-year curbside collection contract with Waste Connections Canada Limited, which deliberately did not include the use of containers for curbside collection. Numerous citizens have expressed displeasure with poor maneuverability of large recycling containers as well as issues with the storage of these containers. In order to accommodate Recycle BC proposed service change, the Town of Asouias would have to renegotiate with Waste Connections Canada Limited for the use of containers for curbside collection. The cost of the service upgrade is unknown at this time. So this, uh, report is simply presented to council for information purposes.
Thank you. Uh, this this topic is also on the agenda at the Regional District Meeting on Thursday, so, um, there will, there's going to be quite a bit of discussion about this.
Do we need a motion to receive that as information?
Not really, just...
Anybody have, yes, Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Cordoff. Um, uh, just in retrospect, the vigorous debate that we had on, uh, on the the storage containers, do you see that being brought back in a different form now?
Well, like I said, Recycle BC will not allow you to use the blue bags anymore after 2020. Uh, so you have to have a container of some sort, whether we get, it's probably more practical to hire Waste Connections to manage the those containers than it is for the town staff to manage those containers because that's quite an arduous job. They tend to break quite a bit and you have to, they get stolen or misplaced and it's hard to keep track of all those containers. So it probably works out best if Waste Connections does that as opposed to us. They have the manpower to do it. Or you opt out for a system where you say, any container is good enough and, uh, like any citizen-owned container will do for the recycling. That poses a problem to Waste Connections in that their trucks aren't, you know, it's a lot of manual labor now for, uh, Waste Connections to dump these various different sizes and shapes of containers into the vehicles.
My memory serves me right, I think the the debate that we had was driven by their desire to move to those kind of containers.
The Waste Connection, like the Waste Collection industry likes the containers because it's it's, uh, less wear and tear on their employees. Uh, they're able to do it a little bit quicker, uh, pick up the collection and stuff like that. Um, it's just that they didn't really budget for those types of trucks for Asouias because we deliberately went away from that and so did the RDOS. Uh, so now they may have to purchase a few more of those trucks if we go to those types of containers.
Yeah, that's where my question was heading. Uh, it looks like we're not going to have any choice with this.
No, the choice is you don't have to go to the, you don't have to be part of the Recycle BC program. Like, if you're not part of Recycle BC, then you don't, you can, you know, we'd have to find some way to recycle stuff our on our own. Uh, Recycle BC is having a great deal of problem with the paper and packaging that they pick up, uh, because they have high contamination rates. And China, which was the market for the recycled paper products, uh, only wants a 3% contamination rate and the best that the province can do is 13. Uh, so they're losing that market and nobody knows where that new market is for this type of paper products.
The concern with, um, with the containers was that it was very easy to contaminate. That was one of the things that was brought up. It also, um, if it was raining or if the weather was bad, they, if you had, like, a blue bin rather than a container that had a lid. So there's all different kinds. And a blue bin container may be an option to look at rather than one that requires a different truck to come and pick it up. I don't know. I think there's, I think it's going to take a little bit of discussion to look at, at, um, at all of the areas that that need to be looked at. And certainly, the Regional District has, all of those, uh, places have agreed that they want to stay status quo. So, um, it's, yeah, it'll, it'll, we we need to look at it, but blue bins could be an option rather than a truck that needs a manual pick.
Well, you still have to manually empty the blue bin, so...
Yeah, yeah, I know. But they had to with the bags anyway, so the blue bin is the same as a bag to me, other than it doesn't have a cover.
Yeah, except you could put more stuff in the bag, so...
Yes, you could. So they might be heavier. But they shouldn't be. Did you, yeah?
Yeah, I have just a question. Jim, in your report, you mentioned that they want this implemented by 2020, right? So it, I I've got this down as a 2019 budget item for discussion.
Yeah, we have time.
Uh, and, uh, council has been, uh, putting monies away in a, in a, uh, reserve account for the purchase of, of bins. Uh, so, uh, but it will be an item for the 2019 implementation and also for the contract negotiations as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for this, uh, for this report, Mr. Dinwoodie. And, um, next we have... All right, thank you very much for this, uh, for this report, Mr. Dinwiddie, and, um, next we have Ms. McKay. Recreational cannabis retail sales.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Oh, I'm not on.
No.
Am I on?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, um, good morning. So, um, this, uh, report is again on recreational cannabis retail sales. A little bit of background, to date, British Columbia has indicated that it plans to have its retail cannabis structure in place by July twenty eighteen, with full implementation effective August, uh, October seventeenth. Details of the approach will include a minimum age of nineteen to purchase recreational cannabis, a government-run wholesale distribution model operated by the BC Liquor Distribution Branch, a retail model that includes both public and private retail opportunities in stores, uh, but the province will be the only retailer for online purchases, licensing, compliance, and enforcement to be done by the Liquor Control Licensing Branch, and a significant role for local governments is that council has the authority, uh, for example, to restrict operating hours, require additional security requirements, ban retail sales altogether, cap the number of stores, and specify zoning requirements. Council passed a motion at the July third meeting in support of the sale of recreational cannabis in the town of Assoius. Council also restricted sales to private stores only. At the July third meeting, council requested that staff provide additional information in order to help facilitate discussions on the following items, again, this is just for example, where cannabis sales will be restricted, for example, proximity to schools or parks, if cannabis sales will be permitted directly on Main Street, which commercial zones will permit cannabis sales, again, that's just in, for example. This report has been prepared in order to help facilitate further discussion on which models will work best in our community. Note that with direction from council, staff would then start the bylaw amending process. No cannabis sales would be permitted until the zoning bylaw updates have been completed, inclusive of a public hearing process. So, let me go on to, whoops, missed a page there. Overview, in order to know which bylaws will require amending, staff will need additional information and direction from council. As noted above and previous reports that council has received, there are a number of items for council to discuss relative to the sale of cannabis in the town. The first was to determine if sales will be permitted, with that decision behind us, now we turn to where cannabis sales will and will not be permitted. So, in a store location discussion, the following maps are provided for discussion only, and are provided to enable council to explore various options with respect to possible locations for cannabis sales. Specifically, this section of the report looks at the relationship between the downtown commercial zone and the Assoius Elementary School, along with the relationship between the shopping plaza scent, uh, commercial C-two zone, and the highway commercial C-three zone, and the neighboring uses. Note, the maps illustrate in the tourist commercial, recreational, vehicle park, campground, and special commercial, and other commercial zones have not been included in this discussion, due to the nature of those commercial zones being specifically designed for tourist and residential neighborhood locations. Okay, so, let's first talk about the C-one or the downtown commercial zone and its relationship to Assoius Elementary School. So, the first map indicates a one-hundred-meter buffer around the elementary school. So, in this particular example, um, all of the properties that are touched by the one-hundred-meter buffer are indicated in yellow, and I left the blue on there, you can sort of see the blue circle. As you get into the next maps, indicates the increased area with, with every increment. So, if cannabis sales were permitted in the C-one zone, um, almost all the properties with a C-one zoning would be permitted to apply for licensing through the province, so, okay? So, um, the next map indicates a hundred-and-fifty-meter buffer from the elementary school. By adding that additional fifteen meters to the buffer area, we've now excluded some properties that fall within the C-one zone from being able to apply for the provincial license, so that's sort of more or less where the purple oval is. Those are, um, properties that are zone C-one, you can see the C-one, um, zoning line underneath. So, the next map illustrates a two-hundred-meter buffer from the elementary school, and this buffer adds the C-, um, additional C-one zoned properties to the north and to the east. And you can see it then crosses across Main Street to the properties that are adjacent to the lake. Okay, so, um, with respect to Main Street, the official community plan identifies the downtown as a traditional Main Street. Assoius has fortunately retained its traditional downtown Main Street, which is a major attraction for residents and tourists alike. Supportive policies are needed to ensure that the downtown continues to be the central focus of our community. The OCP policies state that we seek to promote a dynamic mix of complementary downtown uses. So, some may argue the sale of cannabis is not necessarily complementary use, while others will argue that it's simply another retail outlet. Council may wish to consider restricting the sale of cannabis to stores that do not front directly onto Main Street. That would be served from Heron Park, or Heron Lane, just up here, down to Park Place, or down to the lake. So, uh, with respect to parking recreational sales, um, in the downtown area. Zoning bylaw number ten-five nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety-eight specifies how many parking spaces are required for each use. With the addition of retail cannabis sales to the permitted uses in the C-one zone, it would be appropriate to consider the number of parking spaces this kind of use might require. For example, retail sales stores require one space for thirty meters of gross area, or about three-hundred-and-twenty-two square feet. If cannabis sales were considered as another retail use, council could opt to consider this as an additional use within the retail designation, thus, no further parking would be required. However, if the decision is made that cannabis sales constitutes a new use, consideration should be made to the number of parking spaces that may be required for this particular use. Recreational cannabis sales do have the potential to generate a significant amount of traffic, and that needs to be considered along with the use itself. So, we're gonna talk now about the C-two zone or the shopping center commercial zone. The town of Assoius has several parcel zones C-two, which is shopping center commercial. This zone permits a variety of retail stores and includes professional, medical, and service businesses. Examples within the community, there are zone C-two include the Gateway Shopping Center, which is where bylaw is located, and Lakeview Plaza, which is where the Red Apple is located. So, the, this map indicates in yellow sort of more or less where the C-two, um, zoning is permitted. And then, um, the C-two zoning also includes the plaza at Ninety-seven Highway and Cotwin Drive, which is indicated in this map. And then, with respect to the highway commercial, which is a C-three zone, this extends from one end of our community to another. Um, this zone encompasses the intersection of Highway Three and Highway Ninety-seven, which is shown in the blue oval. Um, it also extends south along Highway Ninety-seven towards the border. Um, again, this map indicates sort of the pockets of the C-three zoning along Highway Ninety-seven. It also extends east along Highway Three Cor- Corridor, which is predominantly the tourist area, I would say, uh, one of the larger areas, um, accumulation of the, um, tourist commercial uses. So, as illustrating the preceding maps, the discussion regarding which commercial zone to prevent cana- cannabis sales in can be quite complicated. Each of the commercial areas is adjacent to a use which could be considered by some residents to be in conflict with the sales of retail recreational cannabis. It could also be argued that by allowing the sale of recreational cannabis in the highway corridor zone at the corner of Highway Ninety-seven and Highway Number Three, it may not project the image of Assoius as a family-friendly resort destination. So, given the complexity of this decision, it would be prudent for council to reconsider the site-specific zoning option presented in the report of July third. This option would allow council to consider each individual site on its own merits. It would also allow for consideration of adjacent uses, parking provisions, access and egress from the site. Note that the provincial government has indicated that the municipality must be in support of the issuance of any license within the community. By utilizing the site-specific zoning, council would be reviewing the license option concurrently with the zoning proposal. So, let's talk a little bit about the licensing process. So, Liquor and Cannabis Regulation Branch of the provincial government will not issue a private retail license without local government approval. That means even if the zoning's in place, you still need to support the actual license pro- process. We'll talk a little bit about that. So, Appendix One of this report outlines the steps required when applying to the provincial government for a non-medical cannabis retail store. So, this is directly from the Liquor and Cannabis Regulation Branch, and if you wanna look at it online, each of the highlighted areas, of course, links to that portion of the program, so you can get a little bit more detail. Um, Appendix Two outlines the choices that a local government may make when a referral is made to them for a license. This referral process is similar to that of the process for a liquor license in that the local government can opt out of making comments, and may also impose additional fees to assess the application. So, one of the things we did receive, um, the additional information, and myself and Francesca Sanya, our, our senior planner, attended a law seminar on Thursday, um, appropriately timed, um, and one of the big topics was cannabis sales. So, uh, one of the things that we did discuss there is that where issuance of a retail license, um, may affect nearby residents, local governments must take into account the location of the proposed store, and must provide comments and recommendations that are in writing, include the views of the local government on the general impact of the community, include the views of the residents, describe the method to use to gather the views of the residents, and indicate whether the application should be approved or rejected, and state the reasons for that recommendation. Again, that's kind of back to the idea of the site-specific zoning, where if you look at the mapping of our community, any, any zone we choose has the potential, potential, um, to impact, um, neighboring uses. So, um, implication for the community, um, the sale of recreational cannabis has a potential to impact many members of our community. Um, organizationally, in order to allow the sale of recreational cannabis in Assoius, amendments to the zoning bylaw and the business license bylaw are, are necessary. Staff have spent considerable amount of time answering questions related to the position that council's going to take in regards to the sale of recreational cannabis. The decision to allow the sale of recreational cannabis in Assoius is only the first step in this process. Once councils provide administrative direction on location of cannabis retail sales, the next step will bring forward, um, information to help facilitate discussions relating to business licensing of retail cannabis. There's no implications for the budget at this time, significant dates, while we're all aware, of October seventeenth, twenty eighteen. Uh, with respect to sustainability, good planning processes that are proactive help contribute to the long-term sustainability of our community. Options for council to consider are that, um, council could provide a resolution providing administration, administrative direction to bring council a zoning amendment bylaw for debate and decision that identifies specific locations recommended for consideration of retail cannabis, or council could provide a resolution providing administrative direction to bring council zoning amendment bylaw for debate and decision that reflects spot zoning as a method of identifying location for cannabis, or council can again request additional information. Um, recommendation, of course, is that staff provide additional direction, um, rather that council provide additional direction to staff, so that staff can bring forward necessary bylaws for consideration, thank you.
Thank you very much, and you've done a great job of putting this report together-
Thank you.
And, uh, and answering many of our questions. I had one question, and I'm gonna let, uh, Commissioner Rhodes first, he had his hand up. At one point, we looked at, um, the option of a standalone building, and, and that isn't in this report. Does that still, um, is that still in the works? Uh, because many of the areas that you've identified would be in, um, in, you know, buildings that share, uh, walls.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough, that's a good question. So, um, again, that's just one of the items that, and I, this was just an example-
Sure.
Of things, um, open for discussion, but that actually speaks to support again for the site-specific zoning, if council chooses to-
Thank you. Commissioner Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So, thank you for the maps. Um, I thought at our last meeting that it was all clear in my mind about how it worked, so getting those maps to us so that we could have a look at, had a lot of positive, uh, feedback for myself. I have to say upfront, um, uh, I have now changed my mind considerably, and I'm very, very much in favor of the site, uh, specific, uh, method of working through this. My reasoning behind that is the complexity of the zoning is beyond anything that I could ever figure out in my mind. It, it has so many implications. Our town isn't a regular town, we don't have straight lines and, you know, the, the highway meanders through our town, and it creates a lot of barriers to having, you know, a fifty, one-fifty, two-hundred, or three-hundred, uh, thing around our parks and schools and that kind of thing. I don't know whether we could ever achieve it by, by doing it that way, and it would end up to be very irregular. We would have to make decisions that allowed some areas and took out other areas that may be a desirable location. And I just kind of feel a site-specific thing is the way that would work best for us. Now, uh, one of the fears of that is to go through the public process with every application that we get. Um, I'm assuming that we would have to have both public information and public hearings for every one of the applications. And I know that was being driven by the fact that we're all hearing from a lot of different people that wanna open up retail stores in our community, but I think at the end of the day, that will be minimized down to a manageable amount of, uh, of applications at the end of the day, so. I'm kind of changing my mind a little bit, I like the site-specific thing. I know it comes with a few issues and a few problems for us, but far less than we would by going the other route.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough, I'm gonna, uh, just speak in direct opposition to what Commissioner Rhodes just said, almost for the same reasons. Um, these maps gave me a clear idea, very clear idea, of, um, proximity to, uh, schools, parks, um, and the three commercial zones, um, and including the option of, of excluding or including Main Street. Now, uh, in the appendix here, uh, at the end of the report, it talks about the process of licensing a dispensary, and part of that is public input, no different than the way a liquor license is handed out in our communities now. If somebody was to apply for a liquor license or a new liquor license in our community, uh, there is a notice that goes up in front of that property, and the public has an opportunity, uh, to oppose or give input. And this, uh, appears to be the same type of process, which would make sense since it's being run through the liquor distribution system of our, of our provincial government. Um, what I'm really concerned about is that we are double debating, uh, the cannabis issue uh, on every time there's a, a particular application in for a location. We'll be discussing it with public input through, uh, zoning, uh, approval here, as well as the province's public input. Um, and it almost seems to me that we'd, we'd be debating cannabis each time, or, or the want of cannabis in our community. So, the other concern I have is the amount of staff time, uh, and council time to do this each time an application comes forward. I would much rather challenge this council, uh, to look at those maps and make a decision based on, on zoning as a whole, rather than site-specific.
Thank you, I'm gonna let Commissioner King and then, uh, Ms. McKay.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd support, uh, Commissioner Rhodes' comments, because when you look at these circles, some businesses are kind of out of, no matter how, which footage you use, isn't fair to all the business in a specific area when you look at the purple circles. So, I think a lot of business could come back at us and complain that, well, we're just across the street, or we're one building next door, so. I, again, I think site-specific does make a lot more sense, and that'll help us whether we decide to put it on Main Street or where we actually want it, so. I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mayor McCordough, just, uh, to clarify, so, if you did go the site-specific, um, then you would only have the one process of, you would be considering the issuance of the license concurrently with the rezoning. Um, so that would therefore constitute your public input process, rather than, so you wouldn't do it twice. You'd only do it once, pardon me?
But the province is also-
Uh, no, the province turns to the local government to do it. If you opt out of doing it yourself, the province will do it. So, if you choose as a community to do the site-specific zoning process, that would constitute the public consultation process. So, if you opt out of commenting, the province will make a decision on whether or not they think that they need to do that public process.
Commissioner Young Burke.
Uh, thanks, Mayor McCordough. I'm totally concurrent with, uh, Commissioner Rhodes. Um, we should be, um, in my estimation, site-specific, which I felt from the very beginning. We have such a diverse community with so many feelings when we're in the area, from, of, from the business community and from the downtown area, I think that it gives- I think that it gives them an opportunity to participate with the public hearing upon receiving applications. So, I'm totally agree with site-specific.
Thank you. I'm just going to give my opinion, too. When I read through this report and I thought this, to me, the site-specific made more sense. I'm concerned about just having the circles drawn and saying anybody in here or out is out. I'm also concerned about some of the C3 zoning that up and down the highway, one of them, the circles, is quite close to the high school, and to me, that makes a difference, too, and I would just as soon not have that as part of it. So, I do think the site-specific, from the sounds of it, would be a better way of dealing with everything. So, Commissioner Campbell and then.
Thank you. Actually, Commissioner King brought up fairness, and I'm wondering, each time an application comes in, that five people are determining for any number of reasons whether that location makes sense, rather than having a blanket decision made based on reasoning that makes sense to me, which is proximity to schools, enhancement of our Main Street. That gives parameters. It gives potential entrepreneurs or business people the knowledge of where they can open and what that looks like, rather than having no idea what a council would decide each time. To Commissioner King's point again, the fairness situation, again, if you're making responsible decisions for the right reasons, no different than there's locations that liquor license, that have liquor licenses that still have to deal with proximity from schools and whatnot. That's for a very specific reason and a reason that makes a lot of sense. If a certain property doesn't fall within the amount of meters and one does, I kind of feel so be it. I just think we need to not make this overly complex. We need to debate and make decisions on zoning that meets our obligations and is sensitive to some of the issues like proximity to different things and what we want to see in our community as far as if we want to see dispensaries on Main Street or not. I would much rather make that decision and allow people to be armed with that knowledge when deciding whether they want to open a business here, rather than roll the dice and hope that the council of the day thinks a specific location makes sense. So, I'm firmly against the site-specific zoning.
I have a feeling that we would have some parameters to deal with on each one of these because there would be some guidance from what we would ask you to do next. So, I don't think each one, each application would be a shot in the dark. I think each application would know what the specific areas are, and to me, that makes more sense. And I think we need, and obviously, this is a hot issue, and we need to be very careful. Ms. McKay, would you?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. I was just going to suggest that, well, there's two things. First off, yes, council could make some decisions with respect to would you consider a license on Main Street? What distance do you want for a buffer? And that could go into your policy under which you wouldn't consider an application. But, you know, I think council's actually already expressed their support for cannabis sales in our community, so I think that number one question's already been answered. So, when people come to our community and say, you know, are you interested in having cannabis retail outlets? We would say, yes, we are. So, we leave it to you as a retailer to find an appropriate location to set up your particular business, as we do.
Based on some zoning.
It'll be different bums in these chairs in a handful of months, right? So, I hear what you're saying, that council has stated that they want to see cannabis sales here, but there'll be potentially different people in these seats in a few months that may feel very differently about things, and that's why I think we need to set something and make it permanent and.
No, it wouldn't be permanent anyway.
We put something out there that is clear.
And I think that, just a minute, Jim, I think that because things are changing so drastically, every time we pick up a paper or hear on the news, something slightly different has been added to the mix, and I think that whatever decisions we make could be adjusted along the way, depending on what comes out from the federal government and the provincial government. So, Commissioner King.
I guess if there was support for site-specific, we could help staff move along with possibly, whether we decided it was 150 or 200 meters from the school would help some of the decision. That's in the C1. When you go down to C2, maybe we don't like anything up at the mall, the shopping center open for discussion, and maybe we don't allow anything in C3, again, open for discussion. That would give staff some parameters to base to start with. So, we are open in a certain distance from the school to start with.
Commissioner Youngberg.
I understand that to be part of the policy. If we decided on site-specific, we would develop a policy to give direction to planning. Am I not right there?
Thank you. Through the chair, yes, and that's one of the reasons that I've suggested in my report that you look only at, for example, the C1, C2, and C3 zones, that the neighborhood commercial zones are not appropriate. But just because it might be appropriate in one area of a C3 zone, you might not think it's appropriate in another area of a C3 zone, and that would be where the site-specific would come into play. So, you could, for example, have a policy that said, we won't consider an application within 150 meters of the school. Standalone buildings, yes or no? Any C1, but not on Main Street. Those are the kind of decisions that council could make, so the next step could possibly be to bring forward a draft, items for consideration for council.
For policy.
Yeah.
That would be before anybody who came and wanted to set up a business would know what the parameters were. That's why you would suggest that we do it that way.
We certainly could, and then, as Commissioner Campbell points out, a new council might say, well, we don't like those parameters, so we want to adjust them.
Yeah. Commissioner Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So, typically, we don't make decisions at committee of the whole meetings, and I'm wondering what our next steps would be with regard to that particular, or do you want to do it within this meeting?
I was thinking the same thing. So, Mr. Remankel.
So, the report very specifically asks for a resolution from council, and it's providing administrative direction as opposed to, you know, you can't spend money and you can't make law in committee through resolution, but you can provide direction to the administration. And in this case, we need to, if we're going to move the process ahead, we need some direction relative to bringing draft bylaw to council. Otherwise, we could bring three or four types of different drafts. But in this case, if we get a very specific resolution in terms of a direction, we can then bring a bylaw for debate and enter into those processes.
So, my understanding is that you're recommending that we either go with option 1, 2, or 3. Would that give you, if we went with one of those, would that give you enough information to come back with some?
Well, hearing council's conversation at the committee of the whole, I think it's, we've got a good idea of more or less the direction that I would go as a professional planner with respect to what I bring forward. It seems that council seems somewhat in support of looking at the idea of site-specific zoning with consideration of some parameters under which a rezoning proposal would be considered, which would then give a little bit more direction to retailers.
Yeah. Commissioner Rhodes.
So, just for clarity, do you want that in this meeting, or are you going to bring it back again?
Again, seeking a resolution for direction of council. In terms of the options, the one option of a site-specific zoning is very specific, and so that would give us some very specific direction. If you go to option 1, that option would have council hammer out the zoning direction that you would give us. So, a resolution of some sort to provide us direction with either option 1 or option 2.
I'll make that resolution, but I would like it to be very clear on the site-specific option.
So, that would be number 2?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Seconding that? Yes.
A couple of questions, two. First one, do we do site-specific zoning for any specific industry right now, a specific market, segment, or industry?
Actually, yes, you do. You allow, you have a notation in the zoning by that allows for cannabis cultivation in industrial zones, but only as a site-specific zoning.
That's the one. Okay. And my second question is, the resolution I was just put forward, am I understanding that we're just bringing options related to site-specific zoning to the open meeting?
Did you want to answer that? Go ahead.
So, not that I mind things moving really fast, I'm a little troubled with some of the wording there, the spot zoning, for example, and we need to refine that a little bit. It just kind of happened real fast. So, I'd like to maybe just take a step back and just kind of clean up that wording in option 2, I think.
Would you like to suggest something?
Well, whatever the term is, site-specific.
Site-specific.
Instead of spot.
Or spot zoning, I don't know.
Does that make sense? Site-specific rather than.
But I would also like to suggest that, oh, it does say spot. It does mean the same thing.
Site-specific is what you meant.
That's correct.
Sounds more formal, though. Site-specific.
It does sound formal, doesn't it? But, site-specific zoning limited to those three zones, I think, would also be helpful, C1 to C2, C3, and council may want to consider requesting that staff bring forward additional information regarding some of the criteria under which council would consider a rezoning, and that would go to the distance from the school, and then you could have the debate with respect to standalone buildings or not. So, these are kind of, remember the last report where we had that diagram, if this, then that, that kind of thing, that you just, we would just work through each of those clauses.
If I can suggest that.
Changing the word spot to.
Site-specific.
Whatever the terminology is.
And then you're adding that other stuff on that.
Then I would go with a second, a second resolution providing for bringing back, the administration bringing back options for policy development, for site selection. Does that sound appropriate?
We haven't voted on the first one yet.
You okay?
Yeah, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, good. We'll get it written up.
I just wanted to make that second motion in support of the policy.
Yeah, we have, we have a first, well, do we vote on the first motion? Okay. So, let's vote on that one first, and then we'll do the second one. Sorry, go ahead.
That council directs administration to bring, sorry, I'm going to take this out. That council directs administration to bring a zoning amendment bylaw for debate and decision that reflects site-specific zoning limited to C1, C2, and C3 as a method of identifying locations for cannabis, retail.
For retail cannabis.
Retail cannabis, yeah. All right. Did you want to speak before we take the vote?
Only to comment that we will debate this at some future meeting.
Yes.
This is not the decision that we're doing.
Should we bring back information?
Yeah, we need to bring back a bylaw for debate of some form.
So, all in favor of this motion? Against? Thank you. And the second motion that Commissioner Youngberg has moved, if we could hear that, and then we'll see if we need a second. You'll second it?
That'll be the last thing we do is the licensing fees. Just got to work through it systematically because it's very complicated.
There's no rush.
Except for October 17.
We don't have to have the stores open by then. We've already.
Apparently, we're contributing to boldness in our community, so we want to.
Are we? Okay. How?
Open a store on the 18th, a new election on the 20th.
Or people pulling their hair.
Could you read that for us, please? Mrs. Hilsen.
That staff be directed to bring back policy development, site-selection options for retail cannabis locations.
That's what you were recommending? Okay. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded.
Director of planning, is that good?
Yeah, that's great. I understand.
Okay. All in favor? Against? Thank you. I believe we've come to the end of the meeting, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn, please. I thank you, Commissioner King, Commissioner Campbell, all in favor. Thank you. We will take five minutes before we go to the next.